I'm somewhat troubled by the blanket from nonprofits. I know that with the Small Business Administration loans, they are treated the same as an ordinary business because they have the same payroll and expenses and revenue and things like that. So it seems to me that township funds was something part of their budget already. That currently, if I'm wrong, that's not an additional application for them. As for, if they're getting that in normal part of their budget, that shouldn't exclude anybody from applying to this grant. Just like they're eligible to apply for other grants.
All right. Thank you, Abby. Are there any members of the public that I missed that would like to speak? Okay, so we'll circle back to the council. There was, I guess, two points brought up. One about nonprofits and one about the length of time being a business within the city. I guess there's three, whether your business got moved outside of the city in the first place. But let's go ahead and circle back on nonprofits. President Pro Tim Connor. President Pro Tim Connor, you there?
Yeah, I am now. I think I'm going to stand with my original thoughts for this first round. I think, and I know other cities did not consider nonprofits part of their small business. I would encourage the Opera House to go ahead and make the contact with the township trying to see and see if this can't be released sooner because the funds are there. The funds have been earmarked for them to have. And since they haven't gotten the funds, that should allow them $7,500 if they get to get half of those funds right now. Those funds have been earmarked to them. The funds are available. So I would like to see them make a contact to Township Trustee McClellan first and see if those funds can't be released now.
All right. Councilman Kingery, your thoughts on nonprofits, circle back?
So I did have a question for Anita about this. So why haven't the funds been released yet? Did you get on to hear her? Yeah.
Yes. So in past years, we have received the funding in January. And Abigail Diener is correct. Our budgets have been filled with that because that funding has been made available to us in past years. This year, the trustee was under the impression that those funds could not be released until the first tax law was received in June.
Oh, my God.
And then split between the two tax laws, one in June and one in December. So that put us, you know, pretty drastically in the hole in January. I understand that, you know, we can go back and talk to Doris again. And I believe our president, Jim Pride, is in the process of doing that.
Okay. So how long, I mean, why is it just now coming up like this instead of like in the past? I mean, what makes 2020 so different compared to the past?
There was a question raised as to whether or not those funds could be exchanged in, or could be released by the township in advance of the tax laws. And I believe there was a ruling from the State Board of Accounts that they should wait. So, you know, the only problem there, of course, is that it was built into our cash flow consideration, you know, first of the year. And, you know, when you don't have that funding available to you and you're $15,000 in the hole at the beginning of the year, you know, that's not in the hole, you know, from anticipated revenue. That's the problem that we're facing now. So we are making that contact. And I haven't spoken with Jim in the last day, so I'll, but I know that he was participating talking to the trustee.
Okay. Councilman Kingery, any further thoughts on nonprofits?
So after talking with Anita, I think we should probably just go ahead and open it up to nonprofits. But revisit the idea of, you know, if they do get the money from the township trustees, if that can be implemented in the rubric on scoring.
Okay.
Shane?
Yes.
I just got off the phone with Doris McClellan, and she said that they can have a meeting and go ahead and pass the resolution to release those funds to those nonprofits now. She's just not sure of the process to have a meeting with her township board. Is that something you can help her with? With the technology of that? But she said that they would have to have a meeting, not the resolution, to release the money now.
Okay. Councilman Kingery, I apologize. I didn't catch off what you were saying there.
Basically, I was saying that I didn't have a problem with opening it up for the NTOs. However, like I said, if, you know, they're going to get the money from the township or, you know, another source, then, you know, that should be implemented in the rubric. Since you already talked to Doris, I would just go ahead. You know, let's try to get them to get the money released for them first before we actually open it up for NTOs.
All right. What about other NTOs that don't get money from the township or other governmental units such as the Chapel Gallery, as mentioned by Julia Lady?
I'm still going to have to just hold off on the first round of grant money.
All right. Councilman Nelson?
Actually, I was hoping to ask Abigail Diener a question. So you said two of the nonprofits were the Opera House and then the Canal, one being the Chapel Gallery. What was the other nonprofit within the city limits?
So the two I mentioned were the Waldach, the Opera House, and then Julia mentioned the Chapel Gallery. I'm sure there may be a couple more that I can't think of right now.
There, Abby?
Yes.
All the churches? You mentioned in the conversation earlier this week that the churches would fall under nonprofits. Is that correct?
Abby, what's your thought there? I saw you shaking your head.
I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't know that a church would fall under that. And two churches have 501(c)(3)'s and EINs like that. I don't think so. They're under a different code section of the nonprofit. So I guess I was not considering churches in my presentation, although churches are doing a lot of good right now for the community. I'm considering 501(c)(3)'s. I think churches are 501(c)(1)'s maybe or (c)(4). So that could be some, that could be a part of the application for them to identify what their operation's at.
I know this, oops, sorry. I was going to say, so I know this makes the decision all her. I'm not opposed to opening it up for the nonprofits with the, you know, I guess, we're kind of basing this all off the rubric. So let's let the rubric add a category if we need to and let it kind of speak for itself. I know that makes it hard because now we're all three divided. It's kind of a ranser, but.
Yes. All right. We'll do one nice round from the council people and then we'll move on to other eligibility and eligible. President Pro Tim Connor for nonprofits?
No, this is Tim.
Councilman Kingery?
I think we'll let the rubric, let them apply, and then we'll just sort it out in the rubric.
Councilman Nelson?
I know, let's see, was it Julia Lady? Yeah, you mentioned some problems with the rubric. I acknowledge that, you know, it's not a perfect system. There's some subjective scoring there. I, the community involvement you specifically have mentioned, I know, that's hard. I guess I just wanted to address that and make sure, you know, you were heard and.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. I said there was three things in terms of eligibility. I wanted to address, oh, the six months in business. I'm going to circle back to the council on this. What are you guys' thoughts on, if you haven't been in business in six months in Delphi, you're completely ineligible? President Pro Tim Connor?
I think I want to stick with the six months.
All right. Councilman Kingery?
I got a question for Julia. The four, the four subtle businesses that opened up, were they opened up January 1st of this year?
There we go. Yes, I believe all four of them were open by January 1st.
Okay. All right. Shane, I'd say just, if that's the six months, we'll just have it January 1st of 2020 as long as they're in business in the city limits of Delphi.
All right. I'll go to Councilman Nelson?
I guess I'll agree with Councilmen Kingery that we'll let the rubric kind of help differentiate that time involvement.
All right. I'll circle back to you, President Pro Tim Connor.
I'm going to stay with six months.
Okay. Um, let's.
I might be wrong about that. Sorry, I might be wrong about that. I'm thinking the Delphi Variety Store and Cheyenne's Dream both didn't open until the first of the year. But I'm not certain of that, just to let you know.
All right. Thank you. We can circle back to that one. I guess, let's go on to timing of this. The question is, if we get this back tonight, we have applications available tomorrow morning, would it be okay to have applications due back at 4:30 p.m. on April 24th? The information we would want from the business owners, you know, your normal business name, address, owner name, contact information, your EIN, how long you've been in business, the type of business, number of full-on part-time employees before and after the pandemic, your 2019 revenue versus your first quarter of 2020, as well as a copy of a driver's license or ID at W-9. And I believe that, in terms of good standing from the Indiana Secretary of State is the information we would want from the businesses. And the question is, would that be sufficient time, approximately days, to get applications in? I guess I'll go ahead and open it up to the business owners to speak on this matter, and then we'll circle back around to the council. I believe you're unmuted. So if you guys just want to take turns speaking, you guys can go ahead at your leisure.
I think it all makes sense.
All right. Anybody, I guess any business owners think that it's too stringent of a timeline, getting it back to us by next Friday at 4:30 p.m. if we have them available tomorrow morning?
It would not be a problem.
That would be fine.
Yes.
Shane, I just had a couple of questions.
Yes.
So the Moose does not open in the first quarter. We're going to have to go sales.
Yes, for seasonal businesses, we'll have to do a comparison. Well, I don't know how we'll do it, but we can figure that out because we're not going to have first quarter statistics.
Right. And then also on the dump, like I said, we're out of the district, but it was something that was forced to move out, and we did not receive any of the seller money, as a lot of people did, to move out. I don't know why. Some places got it, some didn't. And I said it was forced to move out. We didn't have a choice.
Okay.
And there was nothing else available in the city to rent.
I think circle back around to that question after we get done with timing. Don't let me forget. Thank you. I guess, any other business owners, would you object to having the applications come back to us at the latest, 4:30 next Friday to 24th?
I would not.
Yeah, I don't think that's flying any of time.
I got a quick question in regards to the timeline. If that's okay? If you get through this first round and you realize that you have funds still available, would you consider opening it up for a second round and letting those businesses that have not been open six months be able to apply? The more I'm looking at it, there's three of the four that have, they were not open January 1st.
Okay.
It's something to think about, you know, if you consider that.
I think that would be more than fair.
I agree with you on that. I think it'd be more fair. I think we should just have it as January 1st, 2020, where, you know, that's in the city limits of Delphi for the application process on the first go-around.
Okay.
Council, are you guys fine with 4:30 p.m. next Friday to 24th? President Pro Tim Connor?
I am. Kingery?
Hang on just a second. Is that 4:30?
Yeah, that's what time we close next Friday. For those being due.
That's fine.
All right. Councilman Nelson?
Yeah.
All right. I'll circle back. In terms of council, do you think a week is sufficient time to go through and score the applications? So I was planning on sending them to you electronically as soon as they are received. Would a week be sufficient for you to score those applications? President Pro Tim Connor?
It would. I would just like to make the note that you need to have a fifth column for score number five on the rubric.
Right. Councilman Kingery?
I think that would be sufficient.
I think a week. Good shot.
Councilman Nelson?
Yeah, I think a week's fine.
All right. All right. At this point, I'd like to ask council members, do you have anything you would like to ask of the public or the business owners for their input and their opinions on that I didn't cover with my prepared questions? So President Pro Tim Connor, do you have anything you'd like to ask the public?
No, I do not.
All right. Councilman Kingery?
I don't have anything at this time.
Councilman Nelson?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay. So there's a couple of things we need to hash out at this point. So it looks like, from the conversation, we'll be doing multiple rounds of this. With the first round ending April 24th, the second round would begin at a later date if there was money available. What we didn't land on, it's a nutritious question. What we haven't, I guess, got consensus on is nonprofit organizations. Six months or January 1?
I'm good with changing to January 1 to be in consensus.
Okay. We still need to talk about the business moving out or being forced out.
Let me offer this. Was she forced out by the seller project or by the tenant landlord or the landlord?
It was both.
Say again?
It was both. It was the low-income housing.
Okay.
Mayor's daughter approved, and we were told we would get money. And then when it came to it, we didn't do anything.
Okay.
There was nothing else available side-by-side in downtown that would support the investment. And we spent a lot of money on the building the first time getting that fixed.
Okay.
So what's the council's thoughts on that issue? President Pro Tim Connor?
I think the application eligibility guidelines say within the city limits. So I hear what she's saying, and I feel bad for what happened to them. But I think for now, we need to stick with the guidelines.
Okay. Councilman Kingery?
I'm going to agree with Gail on this one. You know, city limits, I think we should focus in on the city limits first and then maybe revisit it maybe for the second time.
All right. Councilman Nelson?
I'll agree in consensus with that. It gets kind of icy when you start considering outside of the city.
Okay. All right. So the only thing we haven't landed on at this point is nonprofit organizations. So let's, last thing, we don't really have consensus on, so let's circle back to that. President Pro Tim Connor, standing firm?
I am.
Councilman Kingery?
Let them apply and let the rubric sort it out.
Councilman Nelson?
I agree with Councilman Kingery.
All right. President Pro Tim Connor, will you vote no on this resolution if we allow nonprofit organizations to apply?
I will, because that's not fair to the people who have the small businesses. So, no, I will not do that to our small businesses.
All right. Your objection is noted. But we'll have to go with the majority at this point, or the majority of the members in attendance. At this point, that is all I had in terms of questions. We will update the application to reflect what we discussed today because I can't remember all of what's in there. But that will be available tomorrow morning. We'll have it on the City of Delphi Facebook page. You can email me. I can send it out. I will send it out to everybody who is on this call anyway. I guess members feel gradual. At this point, I'd like to open the floor for further discussion, starting with President Pro Tim Connor.
I feel good with where we are. I have nothing further.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Kingery?
I feel pretty good with this. You said you are going to put it on the today's Facebook page.
Correct. I will try to get it on the website.
Okay.
It probably won't be there tomorrow morning, but I can have it on Facebook tomorrow morning.
Okay. I just want to make sure all of our local businesses have an opportunity at it so they have the access to get to it.
Yes, sir. All right. Councilman Nelson?
I guess I just want to thank everybody for tuning in and being part of the discussion. I feel pretty good about what we've done today. I hope that we tried to best fit the needs of all the small businesses in Delphi.
All right. Thank you all. I'm going to open it up for one nice round of public comment. We'll start with Margaret Trish-Mendell.
The only thing I could say is, you know, it's done that really discouraged me because we have had this for 2011. And you're not going to help just because it's only been just three or four months. I really don't care, but.
Thank you. Debbie Lowell?
I do have a couple of, I do have a couple of questions, Mayor. Can you hear me?
All right. Yes.
Okay, talking about the rubric. And what is the process for this? Because what I understand you saying is that you are going to send all the applications as they come in to each of the five council members. And usually, there is a time before you start scoring a rubric to make sure everybody's on the same page about what every line means. What does community impact mean? I have an idea. Somebody else might have a different. So is there any consideration given to that kind of thing? Another question, another question would be, so everybody scores what they're given, and then what happens?
The score sheets are sent back to me. I compile them and add them all up. It depends on the number of applications that we have. If we're maxed out at 198,600, if we have 60 applicants, then there's going to be some applicants that don't get funded. It will go through for the council on April 27th. We'll have them all read from highest score to lowest score. They will do the final approval, and that will be, well, no. We'll have to have another meeting in May. My timeline's messed up.
Yeah.
But after they're all scored, the scores will come back to the council for final approval of spending the funds.
And so, and so my first question is, how, how are we going to know, or how are the council members going to know that their idea of what community impact means or community involvement?
Right. You didn't let me answer that question.
I'm sorry. I'm, I talked so much.
Examples from other rubrics. I can put something together for the entire thing, showing the number of points that should be given based off of different criteria. Some of it's going to be a little subjective, but we'll do the best that we can to limit that.
Okay.
Shane?
Yes.
Are we giving any partial awards, or are we looking at giving the full $5,000? And then whether it's like $2,500, $3,000? So I guess we do.
No, the number of applications we get back, I think that's a decision we can make at a later time. I would be in favor of offering partial if we get, you know, 60 applications back. I don't know if we need to decide that tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
I had one, I had one more thing.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Somebody brought up something about taxes, fees, fines, liens, judgments not being scored on the rubric. Did that get changed?
No. So that's an automatic disqualifier within the application itself. So you should have a copy of the draft application.
I do. Okay.
So you would automatically be disqualified before you can even, before anybody can score you on the rubric?
Okay.
Any further questions, Ms. Lo?
So, does the same apply for city incentives, grants in the past? Is that an automatic, is yes an automatic disqualification?
We've never really done anything like this in the past. I know we had, you know, the beside grant, but we were following, you know, more direct federal and state regulations. I don't think we've had any grants besides maybe.
Stellar.
Or added beside grants. And I don't know if we considered that in the past or not. Any further questions?
No.
All right. Ms. Diener, do you have anything?
No more comments. Thank you.
All right. Kingery, do you have anything?
Nope. No more comments.
All right. Cynthia? I don't know if she's still on. Julia Lady?
No, I think if it's okay with people in the rest of the council, we'll host a webinar on Monday and make it available to anybody that wants some information about the grants. We're going to probably open it up for, because Flor is doing something similar. So I thought we'd put together a webinar and invite people to come on, much like what we're doing, that they can, you know, hear straight from the mayor if that's okay.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Kate Lehman?
No additional comments. Thank you, though.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Albo?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Are the applications going to be just cut and dried? Is there any room for explanation, interpretation? I'm not qualified for the government loan. This would be very important for me, but targeting, pinpoint what's lost in revenue. You know, a lot of our business is catering and it's supposed to be no gatherings right now. So you can't project that it's going to be a loss. So my question is.
There'll be an opportunity to highlight how your business has been affected outside of the financial side of things. So you'd be able to make explanations. There are areas where you can explain and provide further information?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Ms. Wherland?
Sorry, I was, I'm muted here. I have no additional comments. Thank you for the opportunity to join the meeting. I think this has been very helpful.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Dunbar?
I want to say thank, I want to say thank you to everybody for kind of, all their hard work to put all this together. One little note I had, which I think you guys decided to change a little bit with the six-month thing. It's hard for us to say now. We just, you know, celebrated 10 years. But I know, I know at the beginning of our business that, you know, something like this happened out of nowhere, and you put all this money in to make it look good and, you know, you have your marketing dollars and all that stuff's kind of potentially gone. I, I think that it really hurts the people who put their time and effort, money into joining the community and to where I think any sort of like timeline on when they started, I think really would be really detrimental to that. Because I know at the beginning, you spent a lot more money even than what you, what you think you're going to spend to open your doors. But I, I think any, any sort of new businesses try to jump in and do their part and again, be part of the community, I think they should have a shot.
All right. Thank you for your comments, sir. Ms. Gibb? Uh, Ms. Jubro.
Uh, I want to, um, to have feedback on what you said and I do really want to thank you guys for holding this. I'm really thankful to be a part of this. I think, uh, we're really grateful, um, and, and blessed to be a part of a really small community that cares about each other and that bounds together and, and helps one another. And that's what I've noticed, being a part of this community, so I'm thankful for it. And I, and, you know, I'm thankful for the people that speak up for the newer businesses because it takes a lot of courage to start a business. And so this is a trying time for all of us. And I'm thankful for your guys' effort to help us, um, all of us, every business that's in Delphi because we're a really special community and, and hopefully, once we get through this, um, we can be even stronger than we already are. So, other than that, I really don't have anything else to say.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Brachel. Oh, no bill's still on. Uh, quick treasure audit, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Um, the only thing that I'm a little bit worried about is getting, uh, proof of good standing from the Indiana Secretary of State within your timeframe. That's going to be hard to do right now with everything that's on their shoulders and with reduced staff at the state office. So you might look at that as something that you'll go ahead and, and score. And if you don't have any of those facts for any of them yet, it might be contingent upon a certain date or contingent upon receiving it. Um, but I don't know that you can expect to get it that quick from the state right now.
Sure you can, you got it.
All right, yeah, thank you for that. Um, I guess, council members, would you be fine with keeping the deadline? Um, and then maybe give them, uh, another half a week or a week, uh, to get that if they're having a hard time getting that, uh, proof of good standing from the Secretary of State? Um, President Pro Tim Connor.
Let me ask you, I know you're going after the OCR funds first and you mentioned something about May for disbursement time. Is that correct, what I heard at the beginning of the meeting?
Uh, no, ma'am, they were hoping, they're hoping to get them out next week.
Hoping. Okay.
Was their, uh, key word there. But they're trying to get a real quick turnaround. Is, we would only, we can't get the funds until after our public hearing on April 27th if we were awarded funds from OCR.
Okay. So are we, I, I think Leanne has a good point. Julia just chimed in with something about a business entity report, would that be? Um, and Abby agreed that that would be another option for them to present that documentation instead? And those are available online? I'm not really aware what that documentation is, can somebody explain that?
Julia, you want to talk on that subject? All right, I don't think I'm muted, Julia, but Julia, do you have anything about the business entity report?
Abby, Abby could probably, yeah, Abigail could probably answer that a little bit better.
Yeah, the business, the business entity report, that status would ship up right as they looked into the Secretary of State. It's very easy to print off in five minutes. Um, and that showed that they had filed that and that they were registered and, and in, in good standing. Right, the certificate of standing, uh, like Leanne said, it can take like three or four days on a normal timeframe. Uh, I don't know how quickly they're doing that, they mail it and so it, it is harder to get that quickly.
All right. Council members, would you be fine with the business entity report as opposed to a certificate of good standing? President Pro Tim Connor.
Yeah, I would be.
Uh, Councilman Kingery.
I'm fine with that.
Councilman Nelson.
Yeah, it's fine.
All right, um, let's see, are there any other members of the public that I forgot to ask for more comments?
Any chance I can make one more?
Sure.
Um, the only thing I would hesitate, that you might be overwhelmed at, I don't know, um, would you allow gas stations, uh, banks, you know, um, professional services? I mean, at this point in time, I know, Gail, you had mentioned 30 to 40 businesses, but I think there's actually a lot more than that when you consider things like that. So just something to consider, you know, you might get a gas station or two and things like that, so.
Insurance companies?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Just have to wait and see what you get, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah, council, do we want to discuss that further? I mean, professional services, banks, gas stations? President Pro Tim Connor.
Let Cody talk you on.
I was just going to say, uh, professional services, can you just clarify maybe just a little bit on that? Like.
Um, doctors, dentists, attorneys.
Yeah, I figured us.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Sure, taken.
Okay, I'll turn it back over to Councilman Connor.
So do we need to make a determination about professional businesses, is that what you're saying?
I, I guess I, I figured they were already included. Um, if we wanted to exclude them, then we should probably make that known.
I thought they were already included.
Is there any desire, I, I think we talked about this earlier, it's kind of including, you know, um, at least medical professionals, but is there any desire to exclude professional services? President Pro Tim Connor.
I'd like to know what some of the other councils have done. I mean, this is very, very, I'm, I'm not looking to make a decision right now to exclude them, I guess.
Okay, uh, Councilman Kingery.
No, I do not want to exclude them.
All right, Councilman Nelson.
No, let's not exclude them.
All right, um, I believe we've touched on every member of the public, so I will bring it back around for one last, uh, council discussion before we take the vote on this. So President Pro Tim Connor, uh, I believe this may be your second time around, but do you have anything further you would like to add?
I would like some clarification on what we've decided about franchises.
Uh, let me go back to my notes. Franchises, I landed on a concurrent that should be able to apply unless the rubric speaks for itself.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything further, President Pro Tim Connor?
No, thank you.
Councilman Kingery.
Go further, I'd like to thank the public for tuning in on our Zoom meeting.
All right, and Councilman Nelson.
Uh, I don't think I have anything that.
All right, well, I will call the question as to the passage of proposed resolution 2020-8 with the changes made, um, built to the application and possibly to the language of the resolution discussed in this meeting. Um, I'll call the question as to his passage and do it by roll call, President Pro Tim Connor.
Aye.
Councilman Kingery.
Aye.
Councilman Nelson.
Aye.
All right, thank you all to the members of the council and to the members of the general public. It's great to see all of you on here and we appreciate your input. Um, at this time, there's a motion to adjourn, is all we have left.
I agree to adjourn.
Uh, I've got Cody with the motion, President Pro Tim Connor with a second. Um, I guess I'll do a roll call, President Pro Tim Connor. Yeah? Councilman Kingery.
Yep.
Councilman Nelson.
Sure.
All right, thank you all for joining us. Um, we will have the application available tomorrow morning. I will send it out to all members that participated in today's meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.